I'd like to open the meeting with a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Move approval of the record, Mr. President.
Motion by Councilor Gould, motion approve the records in favor and opposed to vote. This meeting is being televised live on Cable Channel 9 and being taped by PBD Access TV and also being recorded by a city council stenographer. We're gonna go to 4C, and then we'll go back to B and D consecutively. So, once again, 4C Junk Dealer's License, Alchemy Collectibles, 40 Lowell Street, Suite 12. If you're here, the clerk could please read the notice.
Notice is here by giving that the City Council, the City PBD, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, April 27, 2017, at 7:30 PM in the Frank Lloyd Wigan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, PBD Mass, on the application from Alchemy Collectibles, 40 Lowell Street, Suite 12, PBD Mass, for a junk dealer's license that said 40 Lowell Streets, Suite 12, PBD Mass. PBD City Council, Councilor Joel D. Sassla, City Council President.
Thank you, and if you could please state your name and address for the record and tell us what you'd like to do.
Sure. My name's Robert Conway, 15 Crown &amp; Shields Street, PBD. We want to open a small collectible shop, some things like pop figures, action figures, trading cards, you know, like Yu-Gi-Oh, Pokemon cards, things of that nature, and then some vintage toys as well. That's pretty much it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Counsel McGinn, is this...
Favor.
Anyone who'd like to speak in favor of the petitioner? Anyone who'd like to speak in favor of the petitioner? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition, petitioner? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition, petitioner? Being none? Counsel McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd first start by asking to make a motion on special rules to receive item 8B and refer to this hearing. So moved.
For the motion in favor and opposed to vote. Counsel, which one was that? What number?
8B isn't boy.
8B, thank you.
And that's a letter from the building owner in support of this application. I've spoken to Mr. Conway. He's given me an appreciation for what he plans to do at the site. We talked a little bit about his business, about his hours of operation and so forth. I went down and took a look at the site. I don't have any particular issue with it. So, I plan to be in support of this application, and I defer to other councils at this time. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other councils? Counsel Sinewitz?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, this is a pretty benign use, and my only comment is, I read the application, and in the application, I had no clue what it was. It's just a junk dealer's license. I would just have said, there should be a description of what you want to do with your junk dealer's license. There's nothing in here that tells me you want to make a collectible store, or a furniture store, or whatever you want to do. So, it just would have been nice to have something, so...
Okay.
But that's just a comment, there's nothing... Whoever filled it out should have put that description in there. Thank you.
Any other councils? Couple of quick questions. So, will you be doing sports collectibles, too?
Uh, no, it's not really my thing. I do a lot of 80s, 90s toys.
Okay.
We're gonna have, like, Yu-Gi-Oh card tournaments, Magic tournaments, things like that, for kids.
Sure, and will you be buying or selling any precious metals at all?
No.
Okay.
Mostly, I think, I didn't even know what I needed a license for the vintage toys and used toys that I would sell, probably.
Great, and I did notice, I believe there was unpaid... Was there a tax bill, I believe, Counsel McGinn, for small amount?
Uh, I paid that, yeah.
Yeah, it was on his excise tax, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Any other councils? Counsel McGinn.
Move to close the public hearing.
For the motion in favor and opposed to vote?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to approve the application from Alchemy Collectibles, 40 Lowell Street, Suite 12, PBD Mass, for a junk dealer's license that said 40 Lowell Street, Suite 12, PBD Mass. So moved.
Heard the motion. Any discussion? Roll call, vote.
Counselors Manning-Martin.
Yes.
Garabedian.
Yes.
Gravel.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Petzulis.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Sinewitz. Sassla.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to nothing.
Thank you, and good luck.
Thank you.
We're gonna go to just... Actually, we're gonna go backwards to item 8A?
4A.
Excuse me, 4A. Counsel McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive item 8A and refer to item 4A. So moved.
Heard the motion in favor and opposed to vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to continue the hearing upon the applicant's request to amend its entertainment license until such time as special permit hearing is scheduled on the same request. So moved, and on the motion to be noted for the record, the applicant was contacted by the city clerk in a sense to this continuance.
Heard the motion in favor and opposed to vote.
Thank you, Mr. President.
At this point, I'm gonna switch seats. Counsel McGinn's... I mean, excuse me, Counsel Garabedian, the dean is gonna come up and take over. Okay, item 4B, will the clerk please read the notice?
Notice is here by giving that the City Council, the City PBD, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, April 27, 2017, at 7:30 PM in the Frank Lloyd Wigan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, PBD Mass, on the application from Andre Borziken, 219 Harvard Avenue, Austin, Mass, and Rudy Alixey, 156 Porter Street, Boston, Mass, requesting to obtain the transfer of a Class II motor vehicle license from AGA Auto Sales, Inc., DBA Prestige Auto Sales, 288 Newbury Street, PBD Mass. PBD City Council Counselor Joel D. Sassla, City Council President.
Thank you. Okay, let's see. Would the applicants come up to the podium, please? Okay, you wanna state your name and address for the record?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. My name is Andre, last name is Borziken.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Alex Rudy.
Anthony Albert, 18.3 Drive in Sagus.
Okay, thank you. On the applicants, is there anybody in the... Okay, do you wanna tell us what you wanna do?
For medical reason, I had to retire. I had cancer, and they took one of my kidney out, so I ended up selling both of my dealership, one in Malden and the other one in PBD. So, I'm over here to ask you permission to transfer over, they bought my corporation, to transfer over the license, the used car license, to this gentleman. They bought both of my places, and I wish I could still work, but my doctor advised me, if you wanna live, get out of the business.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody in favor? Anybody who'd like to speak in favor of the applicant? Anybody in favor? Anybody who'd like to speak in favor of the applicant? Anybody opposed? Anybody who'd like to speak in opposition of the applicant? Anybody opposed? Would like to speak in opposition of the applicant? Seeing none, Counsel Sassla. Thank you. So, my first question is, Mr. Albert, have the gentlemen who are looking to purchase your business, have they had the opportunity to work with you up there, and have you made them aware of the plot plan and the special conditions?
Sorry.
My question is, is the gentlemen who you're looking to sell the business to, have they had... I thought I heard you say that they had been working with you, but have they had the opportunity to go over the plot plan and the special conditions on the permit in PBD?
They already purchased both of my businesses. They've been working in Reason and PBD, and they've been working in Malden for the last six, seven months, and very successful, I should say. They're doing a lot of cars, double the cars that I was doing.
Well, so that concerns me, and the reason why that concerns me is because you've been in violation of your special permit in a number of different aspects, and also you haven't been a good neighbor, also. And let me clearly indicate what I'm talking about. Right now, I've been up... I live... I go up and down Route 1 to Costco, I don't know, three or four times a week. I drive home, and every time I drive by, especially recently, you had a... You've blocked the access to Route 1 to leave your lot. You can come in through Danvers, but you blocked it. Not only you blocked it by parking cars there, you have little orange cones. So, I've seen it. Excuse me, I'd like to make a motion, see the late communication from the police department?
On the motion, any opposed? Vote.
It concerned me so much that I did reach out to the police, and I asked them to drive by, and as you all see on your desk, there's a report stating what I just said. And when I went up there Monday night, I asked one of your employees, a Constantine Papazov, and I asked him, I said, "How come you're blocking the area?" He said, "Well, you can go out that way." I said, "But how come you're blocking it? So we can park cars there." So, to me, that's just the beginning of what I see problems here. It's a hazard. I didn't get a chance to ask firefighter Dalton, he was here earlier, but I know for a fact that there's no way a ladder truck could get in there and do a three-point turn and get out. It's just what you're doing is totally against your special permit. In addition, if you look at the parking plan that's submitted, there's some discrepancies. And the discrepancies of this, we gave you a license for 12 vehicles. The town of Danvers gave you a license for no more than 15 vehicles. 12 and 15 is 27. The plan that you've put with the application tonight shows 32. So, obviously, no one's paying attention to what each city and town has given you. And I can't even tell what's going on up there. And what I mean by that is, there's no delineation. No one could know if there's 12 cars on the PBD side, if there's 15 cars on the Danvers side, and on top of it, on numerous times, where space number nine is on your plot plan, you have put two cars in that space, you have put cars up on the curb facing out. You've been so disrespectful that I have not... You know, I tried to look the other way, but you're here before us tonight. And it just... I can't comprehend how you could not know that, and especially blocking the access out onto Route 1. In addition, you know, when we go in... You folks are all familiar, when you go into a city, it says "Entering PBD," and they put it, like, on the highway or something. This is where his business is. This is not a good indication of what you said you were gonna do. You were gonna put greenery up there. I thought you were gonna make it a nice place where people drove and said, "You're the first business people see in PBD, the very number one." You've got a sign up there that has got white lights with nothing on it. It's been that way for, I don't know... There's so many things going on, I can't keep track of how many days and weeks things are a mess up there.
You know, maybe be responding to...
When I'm done, you can respond. When I'm done. So, I cannot go forward with transferring the permit tonight, because there are new special permits that I'm gonna request on this permit regarding parking spaces, regarding delineation of where Danvers and PBD is, and there are other things, too. And I understand you're in the business of selling cars, but we get so, you know, different bill of goods. Some people tell us the internet, some people tell us it's the car lot, but some of the things that you've had for advertising purposes, whether it be the crazy blow-up doll balloon, you've had a mannequin that is just not representative of what I want. And I thought that, you know, I put my faith in you and some of the other councils, that I had some concerns... Let me back up. I had concerns. My other fellow councils put their faith in you. Well, I'm here to report back that, I'm sorry, but you've let them down, and they probably don't even know about it until tonight. But, you know, so for the reasons I've stated, I can't go through with the transfer. We can talk about maybe going out, looking at your lot together. I'm open to suggestions, but the things that are going on up there right now, it's out of control. There's no management, there's lack of any type of courtesy to the city, and feel free to respond.
All right, so I'll try to address those issues one at a time. As far as the sign, we've been working since we're in the process of transferring the license with the kind permission of the committees. We've been working with contractors and ordered a new sign, but as you may know, it takes quite a while to produce a sign of this size, so that's why there has not been a sign on the building. As far as blocking the entrance to Route 1, I have made this decision after witnessing myself how our neighbors from the trailer park drive the opposite way, the wrong way on the highway, just to cut that corner. So, for safety reasons, I decided to block it with the cones, and after the cones were ran over by one of the drivers, I decided to park a vehicle in there. And I think that's in the best interest of the town and the people who live in there, because driving the wrong way on the highway just to cut that little corner is no way safe. And I think that that entrance is only provoking people to do so.
Counsel Sassla. I respect you trying to be proactive, but there's a process, and there's a process to go through to get changes like that, and when you're on a major highway, and there's a special permit... Did you ask Mr. Albert about doing this before you did it?
No, I did not.
Were you aware that they were doing this, Mr. Albert?
No, he was not. He was sick, and I didn't mean to bother him.
I mean, I can get notes for my daughter, sick I've been. I lost 30 pounds ever since I had the kidney operation, and last thing in my mind is that. But I did tell them, this is where the rules is, leave the thing open, and the sign blew away. They said they want to change the color, so they could work with somebody, but that I knew that part of it.
We are actually working on improving the appearance of the lot. You know, I personally took three days and walked around the lot, picking up trash and collecting it and making it look more presentable, and it made quite a big difference, in my opinion.
I'm gonna open the council floor, and then I'll come back. Thank you.
Counsel Gould. Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Sassla, I think that you hit something right on the head. I'm fully in support of you, and I do recommend that you go out on site, that we don't act on this permit yet until you have an opportunity to address what you have found. Maybe you get Mr. Tellerico or one of the building inspectors to go with you and assist you in the legality of it, or the actual permit process of it, but you have my support on not moving forward until they get all their ducks in a row. Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Gould. Counsel Turco.
Yeah, and I think the primary concern here is the parking map and that Counselor Sassla mentioned. Was I... Did I hear right, Counselor Sassla? Mr. Chairman, through you to Counselor Sassla, there was 12 in PBD and 15 in Danvers?
That's correct.
So, we have 27, but your parking map itself shows 32 spaces, so, I mean, obviously, there's an issue here that we're not all on the same page, so I think maybe Counselor Sassla is correct that this needs to come back. Thank you.
If I may... Hold on, one second. Hold on. Any other councils? Counsel Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no objection to holding off to resolve some of these issues so that maybe all the parties can talk, but I think what I would like to see, when this is before us again, is the order of conditions that we had on the special permit, so that we know exactly what was violated and how we can correct those problems, so that going forward, if we approve this, everybody is in full agreement and understands what our obligations are.
We do have that. It's on 8M for the special transfer, for special permit. Counsel Walsh, are you all set right now? Okay. Counsel Charis.
Thank you, through the chair. Has the transfer taken place in Danvers, that portion? Has that already happened? Is it dual licensed?
There's two cities involved here, a town and a city, so it's already been to Danvers?
It is truck cars in PBD, that's all we can put on there, and the rest goes in Danvers.
Yes, but has that... Through the chair, has that transfer been granted in Danvers?
Yes, on the first day. It took a three meeting, and they grant us to park over there, 15 cars in Danvers.
I think what he's saying is, have you gone there recently? Like, you're coming here tonight? Have you gone to Danvers yet for your transfer?
They don't care, because the licenses in PBD are not in Danvers. They allow us to park overnight over there, that's all it is. They don't care, you know? This is only to transfer the license over.
Counsel Charis.
I defer to Counselor Sassla. Is that correct? They didn't have to get a license from Danvers? I was trying to remember this proposal when I first got on, and I know it was... You had it, you had no cars there for a while. Am I correct?
Through the chair, Counsel Charis, it is in... There is paperwork from the town of Danvers stating, I believe, as Counsel Garabedian said, and Mr. Albert, it's the licenses through us, they gave them the permission to park 15 cars. I would like to request, I'm gonna assume, we're gonna try and go forward this, that Clerk Spanos might wanna reach out to Danvers to see what the latest paperwork you have from them, if you can reach out to them and see. I think we have a document in this packet. If you confirm that's the latest, and also confirm with them that they don't need to change... You know, I would think there'd be some legality, they might wanna put the new names on, but maybe you can find out how they want... How they handle it. If it's what Mr. Albert says, great. If it's a little bit more than that, if you give a report back to us, I think that'd be great. Just while I have the floor, I just want to address Counsel Walsh. Counsel Walsh, under 8M, right now, we were good guys. We gave them only two special permits. We gave them, there shall be a maximum of 12 cars. Can't tell you whether that's being done or not, I have no idea. Number two, a certified plan shall be made part of the special permit. Certified plan's not valid. Certified plan shows... Well, it shows 12 cars, but I can't tell, and this is what we're gonna... We're gonna work on trying to tighten this up and make it better for them and better for us to understand going forward. That's my goal.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Sinewitz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just, through you to Counsel Sassla, when you do go out to that site, I wouldn't go alone. I would go with the building inspector, I would have a representative of the police and the fire, because each one is gonna have their own take on it, on what their code is and what they have to enforce, and then the other part is, blocking an egress on a highway, that's a problem. You can't do that. That's a safety issue. That's a serious safety issue, and then you got the issue of over your permit on the number of cars. So, it's another issue. So, I'd say go out there, and the one thing I don't get is, you sold the business, you're already operating, and you haven't transferred the...
We sold the corporation.
So, they're operating on site. They're operating on site without a permit, because it's supposed to be transferred, because it's new ownership.
They work for me, I guess, because I still own the license, and that's why I'm here for the transfer.
Usually, what you do is, once you come here and you transfer it, then they open up. You don't open up first, and what if you don't get your license?
It was already open, and...
All right, I understand. So, that would be my recommendation.
Okay, anyone else? Any councils? Counsel Sassla.
So, as you can see, there are many... I'm gonna suggest, Mr. Albert, and that we continue this, and that we get together and we'll get together and we'll meet together with the public safety and the building inspector and the soon-to-be new owners, and why don't we go up and we'll hash this out, and we'll come up with some special permit conditions that I think will make this a lot easier going forward, so there's no need to guesswork. That's my recommendation. You can choose to ask for a vote, or you can agree to continue this, and we can, when we recess, we can set up a meeting.
Well, they do have the special permit, my lawyer's got it. I mean, I went there three times to get the permit. Finally, they agreed to it, long they blocked the entry with the guy, the landscaper company, and finally, they give them the permit to open up on the other side of the street, and they block off the entry to come through the park, you know, our own driveway, and that's the only reason. I mean, I couldn't have operated there without the permit. The permit isn't there.
Do you understand...
Counsel Sassla.
Do you understand that when you go home at night...
There you are.
Do you understand that when you go home at night, and you leave cars parked that are blocking out, blocking the access to Route 1, if there was a fire and the trucks get in there, there's nowhere for them to go? I'm done.
That's gonna be open. I didn't even know about it. I mean, I put a sign in there, "Right side only," because that's what Danvers told me to do. Put a sign in there, I put an end cap, even though it's PBD, I says, "I'd be glad to do it." And I did put the end cap sign, and I put a sign, "When to go out of that way, they go to the right only." So, everything they told me to do, I did it. Now, they block it, I didn't even know about it. So, I'll make sure that it's gonna stay open. I mean, it's no doubt about it, but like you say, people was coming, sneaking through there, but you should have called the police.
On the motion to continue, roll call.
Counselors Manning-Martin.
Yes.
Garabedian. I mean, Sassla.
Yes.
Gravel.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Petzulis.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Sinewitz. Garabedian.
Yes.
Mike, can we have, like, a one-minute recess?
A one-minute recess.
Trust me, I did it out of the best interest for the safety of people and employees, because I wouldn't want somebody to hit the head on another people.
Email me your contact information, I'll give you a call, we'll set up a meeting.
What do you need, Turco?
Do I need you? I think you should be there, you have the best of interests, you know?
Yeah, I do.
You know? I don't, you know, let's talk, let me know. I mean, I think it can happen, but, you know, it certainly wasn't...
It wasn't planned that I would do that.
I'm sure, and I apologize, you help, I understand, but...
If they did that, I'm sure they're gonna open it up.
But there's things that I'd like, you know, I got one shot at getting this done, right? I understand, I got it. I don't know you guys, I saw you people, I think, but you know what? There are things I need to be brought to spec before the transfer. We'll together get that done. I don't wanna get happy myself.
Fortunately, if I didn't get sick, the place wouldn't look like this.
I understand.
It was a little...
Just email me your contact, and we'll try and get together sometime next week, I'll do that.
Sure, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
If...
I'm sure I can get this through to you. I think...
That way you can... Greenpeace. I do step down. I was just... Do you have a question? Give me that.
Do you have a question?
You know, I'm...
Do you have a question?
You know?
Yeah, I do.
You know? I don't, you know, let's talk, let me know. Let's talk. I mean, I think it can happen, but, you know, it certainly wasn't...
It wasn't planned that I would do that.
I'm sure, and I apologize, you help, I understand, but...
If they did that, I'm sure they're gonna open it up.
But there's things that I'd like, you know, I got one shot at getting this done, right? I understand, I got it. I don't know you guys, I saw you people, I think, but you know what? There are things I need to be brought to spec before the transfer. We'll together get that done. I don't wanna get happy myself.
Fortunately, if I didn't get sick, the place wouldn't look like this.
I understand.
It was a little...
Just email me your contact, and we'll try and get together sometime next week, I'll do that.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
If...
Hey, there, that's...
You want that, you can have it.
Late communication, Kelty?
Okay, 4D councilors? For a entertainment license, Bertucci's Restaurant, with the clerk. Please read the notice.
Oh, is that young man? That young man?
Oh, is he here? Okay. Notice is here by giving that the City Council of the City Peabody will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, April 27, 2017, at 7:30 PM in the Franka Wigan Auditorium, City Hall 24th, the Peabody Mass, on the application from Bertucci's Restaurant Corp., 15 Newbury Street, Peabody Mass, requesting to amend an entertainment license to allow for live entertainment, specifically live music at said 15 Newbury Street, Peabody Mass, Peabody City Council, Council Joel D. Saslaw, City Council President.
Thank you. Would you like to say your name and address for the record, please?
Sure. Sean Gillis, 298 Main Street in Wakefield.
Okay. And you want to tell us what you gotta do?
Yeah, we just want to have like acoustic guitar Thursday and Friday nights for a couple hours. Not to get too granular, but with Market Street and Linfield, we lose a lot of that late-night business now, so we were thinking just... Oh, I apologize. So, not to get too granular, but to, with Market Street, we lose a lot of that, we've lost a lot of that, you know, business at night or people coming out. So the thought was just to have some acoustic guitar, one, you know, a solo performer, a couple nights a week for two hours. Just to try to drive a little business.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that's in favor of the petitioner? Anyone in the audience in favor of the petitioner? Anyone in the audience opposed to the petitioner? Is there anyone in the audience opposed to the petitioner? No takes. Councilor Saslaw.
Thank you. I assume everyone has read the application. I'm comfortable with the request, maximum of two, the maximum will be two guitar and keyboard, is that correct, Sean?
Yeah, yes, that's correct.
And you said, what nights are you looking to do entertainment?
We're looking at Thursday, Friday, or Saturday.
Okay. I have no questions at this time.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other councilors? Councilor Mitsoulis?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have a problem with Bertucci's, because I'm pretty familiar with what your restaurant's like. It's pretty high-class, and, you know, it's family-oriented. But I'm only speaking on the permit itself, because I've had issues in my ward, and I just want to make you aware of it, so you will know what the penalties will be if, for some reason, you don't live by the conditions of the permit. And I say that to everyone who comes before us for an entertainment license. And one of the reasons I say that, it's not a right, it's a privilege that we give you, and you've got to honor that privilege. And one of the things I'm gonna tell you is that you have to police your area, whatever type of entertainment you have coming in there. Because if you don't, and you have any type of an issue outside of the property or even in the property, and the police have to show up because of the entertainment that's there, what's gonna happen is that your entertainment license is gonna be revoked, and you will not be able to have television in there, or radio, or anything else that goes with an entertainment license. Now, this is not something that we normally tell people that are applying for entertainment license, or companies that are, but we're living in a different time right now. It's not, entertainment licenses are not the way they were years ago. You'd have a little problem, and, you know, they would just fix it. It's not that way anymore. This is a privilege, and don't, you know, violate the privilege that we're giving you. Because I know that myself, I will be the first one to say, "Take their license away." And the results of something like that could be, you could wait three years. We did that, I did that in my ward. I took a license away for three years, and then I took another license away and put them out of business.
Absolutely, I mean, we're, yeah.
Okay. I mean, you understand where I'm coming from? I have no, I have no problem with Bertucci's. My only interest is the welfare and the safety of your customers, the police that have to come if you call them. You follow what I'm saying?
Absolutely, you know?
Okay.
And certainly not looking to...
I'm gonna follow the lead of the Councilor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Mitsoulis. Councilor Chair.
Thank you. In the application, it says dancing, you're not gonna have any room for...
No. And we don't have really the space for that, so I was drafted, I think, up at our corporate office, so I can certainly, that needs to be changed, we can change.
And do you have a separate room that you do parties?
We do.
Would that, would you be using that for group parties also?
No, I think it was just, the idea was just like one or two people, you know, playing at the bar, but no, not for...
And I love that idea. Many times I like to go somewhere for dinner and have, you know, guitar or keyboard or what have you, playing, so I certainly gonna support it. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Any other councilors like to speak? Councilor Saslaw.
Thank you. Before I make the motion to close the public hearing, I just would like to also, Bertucci's is a good community partner, and I know if any civic organization runs out, reaches out to them, they do do fundraises where they give back to the organization, so I'm gonna give them a plug while I have the opportunity. On that note, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed, to vote? Councilor Saslaw?
Thank you. I'd like to approve the application from Bertucci's Restaurant Corporation, 15 Newbury Street, Peabody Mass, requesting to amend entertainment license to allow for live entertainment, specifically live music at said 15 Newbury Street, Peabody Mass. So move.
On the motion, roll call.
Councilors Manning, Martin.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Gravel.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Mitsoulis.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Sinewitz.
Yes.
Garabedian.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to nothing.
Thank you.
All right, buddy. Councilor Saslaw?
Yes, motion to receive late communication from Council Kelty regarding to this, on the hearing. Motion to receive.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed, to vote?
And the request was to continue the hearing until May 25. I have no issue with that. So move.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed, to vote?
Now, we'll move to item five, reports of committees. First, Legal Affairs Committee, Councilor Gravel.
Thank you, Council President. The Legal Affairs Committee, which is normally represented by Councilor Walsh as the chair, he had asked me to sit in as chair that evening, as he wasn't unable to attend. The committee consisted of myself, Councilor Garabedian, Councilor Gould, Councilor Turco, and Councilor Ann Manning-Martin, also joined that evening by Councilor Mitsoulis, Council Saslaw, Councilor Turco, and Councilor Garabedian. Meeting was conducted on April 20, and Council, again, sorry. Everybody but Tom. Sorry. The meeting was held on the evening of April 20 here at the Wigan, and it was to discuss proposed language for the amendment of the zoning ordinance regarding the moratorium on the retail sales of recreational marijuana. After some discussion, there was a motion that the proposed zoning amendment creating a moratorium on the retail sale of marijuana be forwarded to the planning board to be in the zoning amendment process, in conjunction with the zoning amendment process, which chapter 48, section 5 of the Massachusetts General Law's follows, by adding on a section 6, special regulation as a new section 6.14 entitled, "Temporary Moratorium on Sale and Distribution of Recreational Marijuana." There shall be a temporary moratorium through December 31, 2018, thanks to the good information given to us by Councilor Ann Manning-Martin, on the usage of land structures, land or structures for recreational marijuana establishment and marijuana retail, which you shall include, without limitation, the operation of any marijuana establishment as defined in General Law, chapter 94G, section 1, including, without limitation, a marijuana cultivator, marijuana testing facility, marijuana product manufacturer, marijuana retailer, or any type of licensed marijuana-related business, and that the prohibition shall not apply to the sale, distribution, or cultivation of marijuana for medical purposes, as licensed in the chapter 369 of the Acts of 2012. That motion was passed on a 5 to 0 vote, and so move to, the motion here is to send this to the planning board, correct him? So move.
Further report from Councilor Gravel? Councilor Sinewitz?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Councilor Gravel. I wasn't able to attend. Has there been any talk about zoning the recreational marijuana? Because, you know, as we learned from the medicinal, we were told to ban it by advice of our city solicitor, and now we're told that that won't hold up in court. So now we're back scrambling. So, you know, my take on the recreational is, zone it, put it where we would want it to be, so you can control it, ban it, then it has to go on the 2018 ballot, not the 2017, because I don't believe the city charter supersedes state law. And probably what we'd have is an expensive straw poll, maybe not expensive, and about marijuana. So, but the point is, if it fails, we don't have it. If it passes, we know exactly where it's gonna go, and we can control it. But to wait until 2018, right? Because I think, and I think as the mayor said, you can put 10 lawyers in a room, and we got 10 different opinions, that I don't know if our legal advice is correct on this. It wasn't on the medical. Wasn't on the medical. Now, we're scrambling to have a meeting about zoning. And I just think that, you know, it's clear, no one wants recreational marijuana, but you have to prepare for the worst, hope for the best. And if you don't do that, we're gonna be left scrambling, where are we gonna put it? So that's just a thought. I'll support sending it to the planning board, but you have to be proactive, you can't just sit back, because these people got millions and millions of dollars. The legislature hasn't come down fully, we don't even know what the laws are, it's a fluid situation. So, you know, we need to protect ourselves, and where it goes, let's have meetings and discuss where we want to put it, not where we're for it, but we want to control it. And it would be proactive. That's my take on it. Thank you.
Yeah, to answer your question, I don't, there was no discussion on where to put it. The discussion was on taking the moratorium from the, there was a previously proposed moratorium that was before the state election, and the idea of moving it to beyond the state election would be that if we can't get it on the local election, that we could push it further out, and it would be covered under the state election at that point in time.
That's why Council Manning's information, that's why they moved it out to, was it, December of 2018? Because what will happen with the cities that vote, you know, want to put it on the ballot? So maybe if Council Walsh can give us some more information from the state.
Council Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just very quickly, I had a discussion with the Secretary of State's office this week. Their opinion is that we can, in fact, have it on the municipal ballot, but we may have to affirm it through a piece of legislation, just validating it after it. They have some language that is pending, but the advice is to move forward. If we want it on the municipal ballot, we are able to do that.
Council Sinewitz?
Well, that's interesting, and it seems like every step of the way, we get challenged legally on it, so we can have it on there twice if we have to put it on. To me, it's just a straw poll. We already kind of know where this is gonna come, but it's gonna be close. I mean, it wasn't, it was defeated in Peabody, but it was relatively close, so half of, you know, 54, if half are against, so, yeah, I just, I know where this is going, and it's gonna be in court. So whatever we can do to protect ourselves and control it, zone it, and I don't find any problem zoning it in case we lose. And we know right where we want to put it, and there's no, you know, people telling us where they're gonna put it, like on the water building. Thank you.
We have a motion on the floor. Would you like to read the motion, and roll call vote? Actually, just read the motion, just one more time, if you could.
Well, the motion is to refer the proposed language on the temporary moratorium on the sale and distribution of recreational marijuana to the planning board to start the zoning process.
Any further discussion? All in favor, any opposed, to vote?
No further issues on the legal subcommittee.
Thank you. Next up, Finance Committee, Councilor Gravel.
Thank you, Council President. On that same evening, there was a meeting of the Finance Committee, sitting as the chair, I was sitting as the chair, joined by Councilor Gould, Councilor Manning-Martin, Councilor McGinn, Councilor Turco. Also at that meeting were Councilor Garabedian, Councilor Mitsoulis... To me, it's just a straw poll. We already kind of know where this is going to come, but it's going to be close. I mean, it wasn't, it was defeated in PBD, but it was relatively close. So half of, you know, 54, if half are against, so, yeah, I just, I know where this is going, and it's going to be in court. So whatever we can do to protect ourselves and control it, zone it, and I don't find any problem zoning it in case we lose. And we know right where we want to put it, and there's no, you know, people telling us where they're going to put it, like on the water building. Thank you.
We have a motion on the floor. Would you like to read the motion and roll call vote? Shall we just read the motion just one more time, if you could?
Well, the motion is to refer the proposed language on the temporary moratorium on the sale and distribution of recreational marijuana to the planning board to start the zoning process.
Any further discussion? All in favor, any opposed, to vote?
No further issues on the legal subcommittee.
Thank you. Next up, Finance Committee, Counsel Gervell.
Thank you, Counsel President. On that same evening, there was a meeting of the Finance Committee, sitting as the chair, I was sitting as the chair, joined by Counsel Gould, Counsel Manning-Martin, Counsel McGinn, Counsel Turco. Also at that meeting were Counsel Garabedian, Counsel Mitsoulis, Counsel Charis, and Counsel Saslaw. I think I got everybody, Tim. There were several items on the agenda for transfers. There was considerable amount of discussion. After discussion, there was a motion made by Counsel Gould to approve the following transfer of funds as submitted by his honor, the mayor, under the date of March 28, 2017. So from the police budget, the request was to transfer $50,250 coming from the following line items. From 52-111 electricity, $4,000, 52-111 water, $500, 52-321 computer main, $5,000, 53-010 professional services, $15,000, 53-145 accreditation, $2,750, 53-420 postage, $1,000, 54-110 gasoline, $20,000, 54-213 forms printing, $500, and 57-340 miscellaneous reimbursement, $500, for a total of $50,250. To the police budget for overtime, 51-130, in the amount of $50,250. Also, from the budgeted reserve, which is account 1132057410, an amount of $337,050 was being transferred to the police department salaries, 2151110, in the amount of $225,000, and 2151130, the overtime budget for the amount of $112,050, for a total of $337,050. And finally, from the unreserved fund balance 00035901, an amount of $361,500 to the police department budget, 5130 overtime, in the amount of $153,700, 51136 drug overtime, in the amount of $115,000, and 51137 dispatch overtime, in the amount of $92,800, for a sum of $361,500. The motion was made, and it carried 4 to 0 with Counsel Manning-Martin voting present. So move.
Thank you, Counsel Gervell. Any questions, councillors? Being done, we're going to take a roll call vote.
Councillors Manning-Martin.
Present.
Garabedian.
Yes.
Gervell.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Mitsoulis.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Sinowitz.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Motion carries 10 to nothing, one person.
Thank you, Counsel.
Also, on the agenda that evening, there was a motion made by Counsel Gould to approve the following transfer of funds as submitted by his honor, the mayor, under the date of March 28, 2017, an amount of $692,000 from the unreserved fund balance, which was account 00035901, to the fire department for account number 2251130, in the amount of $692,000. So move.
You've heard the report. Any questions, councillors? Being done, roll call vote?
Councillors Manning-Martin.
Yes.
Garabedian. Gervell.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Mitsoulis.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Sinowitz.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Motion carries 10 to nothing, one absent.
And finally, there was a report by the Finance Director on our, the status of our bond rating and the status of our finances as associated with general obligation bonds. The report was positive, and the motion was made by Counsel Gould to receive the report of progress, updating the city council on these bonds. So move.
Any questions, councillors? Thank you. Anything else, Counsel Gervell?
No, there is none.
Thank you very much. Next up, Industrial and Community Development Committee, Counsel Sinowitz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am going to defer to Counsel McGinn for the motions on the parking ordinance, parking motions for the downtown, to present those.
Counsel McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. There was a meeting of the Industrial and Community Development Committee meeting as the committee of the whole this evening, April 27th. All councillors were present. There was presentation from the mayor regarding his parking proposal and the elements of the plan that was debated extensively, and there were four motions as follows. Move to refer to the planning board, the mayor's language in the mayor's February 16, 2017 communication regarding changes to the zoning ordinance as amended during the April 27, 2017 meeting of the Industrial and Community Development Committee, sitting as the committee of the whole. So move.
Any questions, councillors? Roll call vote, please.
I'm sorry. Is this the first portion? Are you doing all three again?
Correct.
So this is...
One of three, I believe. Correct, councillor?
One of four.
Four, excuse me.
Oh, that's right, the four. Thank you.
Roll call vote.
Councillors Manning-Martin.
No.
Garabedian.
Yes.
Gervell.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Mitsoulis.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Sinowitz.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Motion carries 9 to 2.
The second motion was to move to amend the special permit application to include the parking management plan details as described in the mayor's February 16, 2017 communication, and such amendment to the special permit application shall be effective no sooner than the effective date of the changes to the zoning ordinances related to parking requirements in the B.C. zoning district. So move.
Any questions? Being done, roll call vote.
Councillors Manning-Martin.
No.
Garabedian.
Yes.
Gervell.
No.
Turco.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Mitsoulis.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Sinowitz.
No.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Motion carries 8 to 3.
The third motion is to advertise the section 19-108.1 ordinance change described in the mayor's February 16, 2017 communication, and such ordinance change shall be effective no sooner than the effective date of the changes in the zoning ordinance related to the parking requirements in the B.C. zoning district. So move.
Heard the motion. Roll call vote.
Councillors Manning-Martin.
No.
Garabedian.
Yes.
Gervell.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Mitsoulis.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Sinowitz.
No.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Motion carries 9 to 2.
And, Mr. President, the fourth motion was to motion to that the Industrial and Community Development Committee further consider the PBD Downtown Action Team communication dated May 19, 2016, received by the city council on May 26, 2016, regarding various parking matters in the B.C. zoning district other than the residential parking requirements. So move.
Heard the motion. Any discussion? All in favor, any opposed, to vote?
That's it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Sinowitz, your answer. You're good. Next up, Committee of the Whole, report out, this was regarding the review of the 2016 Aggregate Industries Annual Report. Counsel Sinowitz brought us up the date on the report. This is the 2016 report. There were nine blasts. There were three complaints, and there were also three fines that were continued without a finding. That was, and we just wanted that publicly known, because basically, if they have another fine, I believe those three fines would be retroactive. There was one public comment, just from one of the residents who is involved up there, just regarding, basically, thanking Counsel Sinowitz, and some, just some aspects of some water being used up at the property. Two motions came out of the subcommittee. The first motion made was that all councillors receive a 2017 annual report when available. You've heard, any discussion on that motion? Excuse me, Counsel McGinn?
Yeah, can we just stipulate that that's in electronic format? The report is enormous, so I...
I'm, gee, it was, go right ahead, Counsel.
Yeah, Mr. President, so what hap, what, my, I think my motion was that after the first of the year, I think everybody on this council should receive, and the new people should get, a copy of the special permit. When we do the annual report, we do get some in electronic form. We get, he probably gives me five. I hint, Tim gets one, I take one, a bunch of the neighbors, and then the rest, if we need more, they'll print more, we get them. You can't print, I mean, look at it, you know, so they'll print out more if we need them. But that wasn't the motion. The point was to get, make sure everybody has a copy of that special permit moving forward, because that will become an issue for a new councillor. That, so that would be the motion, to have that special permit distributed.
You've heard the motion? Any discussion? All in favor, any opposed, to vote? And then, so Counsel Sinowitz, just a point of reference, was there a second motion that they should receive the report, or was that just a suggestion? I thought it was to...
No, the second motion was to approve the annual...
Oh, excuse me, to approve the 2016 report. I apologize. So the second motion to receive the 2016 report. Any discussion?
Yeah, I, Mr. President?
To approve. Yes.
On the motion, could I ask Counsel Sinowitz to read the report into the record? No, I'm sorry. Sorry. I don't make many attempts at humor, but that was one.
You've heard the motion? Any discussion? All in favor, any opposed, to vote? And as I said, the subcommittee, I'll just say it publicly, that anyone looking to represent this part of town, I strongly suggest they reach out to Counsel Sinowitz to get up to speed. You've done a tremendous job on that in keeping the city abreast and the citizens abreast, and thank you very much. Next up, motions and orders and resolutions, Counsel Anne Manning-Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under suspension of rules, move to receive item 8E and refer it to Legal Affairs. So move.
Heard the motion. All in favor, any opposed, to vote?
And I'd also like to, regarding that matter, it's regarding special municipal employee status to, through you two, Counsel Walsh. I'm not looking for any action as of yet, I just don't want the matter to be lost, so I wanted to refer it to be captured into committee. But along those lines, is that me? Along those lines, if I could ask of the clerk, if you generally take a look at AD, you'll see that there are 23 special municipal employees listed on the grid, and this is actually kind of an interesting subject that I'm researching, that it's really was only used once under, why is this doing that? Oh, sorry, Counsel Gervell, it's like Niagara Falls for you, sorry. Okay, maybe it's because of my computer. So it's only been used once under Mayor Bettencourt, which was why it came to our attention recently, because it's just been used once. But all of these other ones were done under Mayor Bonfanti, and you can see the biggest number of them, I think 18 of them, were done on February 13, 2003. So I was wondering, Tim, if you could research the minutes and just, you know, word search for special municipal employee, to find out what the rationale was for those, because that's where the lion's share of them were, on February 13. But if you could also just go through February 1, 2005, April 28, 2005, February 24, 2011, well, April 27, oh, April 27, 2004, and then we have April 6, 2017, we have that. That's fresh in our minds, because I just went through that. And the reason I say that is, as you can see on here, some of these individuals are in paid positions and some are not. And what's interesting too is I, you can see that the PBD Institute trustees, the library trustees are on here. And I ran into a trustee last night, and I asked her if she was aware that she was a special municipal employee, and she had no idea what I was talking about. So I'd like to know why these positions were listed as special municipal employees, what the rationale was. And also, there's something else that I've learned, is some of these positions mention people by name, and you can't, for the research that I've done so far in chapter 268A, which is an ethics law, is that you can't mention somebody by name. You have to make the position itself, that it's a special municipal position, it's not a special municipal employee. So to use the most recent one that we did, we did the Veterans Agent, but we have them listed here by name, Stephen Patton, Veterans Agent. But what essentially what we've done is every Veterans Agent that comes after him will be in the position of the special municipal employee. So we didn't make Stephen Patton the municipal special status, we made his position. And you can also see here, we have one police department, a police officer, listed as a special municipal employee, but you can't just pick one person out of a department. You have to make the whole, all of them be treated the same. So it doesn't look like we have a handle on it, and also, I don't know, that these individuals, if they do use this status, are supposed to be filing financial paperwork, I think with you, Tim? Were you aware of that? Right. So I don't think we have a handle on this special municipal employees. Some employees are in the positions and aren't even aware of it, and if those that are in the position, they should know what is required of them, and I don't think that we've done any of that. But again, it's only been used once, just recently, by Mayor Bettencourt, and that it was used in a much larger portion by Mayor Bonfanti. So if we could just research that information and get it to us, and I'll just refer that to Legal, so we can all take a look at it, so we can have a better handle of what we're appointing, who we're appointing to what, and what the responsibilities of us and the individual is. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Anne Manning-Martin.
So, I'm sorry, in the form of motion, if we could get the, that information from Tim, for the minutes of those meetings referencing that matter. Thank you very much.
You've heard the motion? All in favor, any opposed, to vote?
No further motions, thank you.
Counsel Garabedian.
No motions, Mr. President.
Counsel Gervell.
Under suspension of rules, I'd like to move items 7B and 7C to the Finance Subcommittee. So move.
Heard the motion. All in favor, any opposed, to vote?
No further motion.
Thank you, Counsel Turco.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to receive item 7A, which is a communication from the mayor regarding 143 Linfield Street, and just briefly, we are seeing some movement, and this is a letter from DEP stating that the spoil piles on the property are being identified, and appropriate facilities to bring those piles to have also been identified. So it's good to see some movement. I know it's going to be slow, but we are seeing something happen, so. And thank you to the mayor for his continuous communication and...
Heard the motion. All in favor, any opposed, to vote?
Mr. President, under suspension of the rules, move to receive item 8C.
Heard the motion. All in favor, any opposed, to vote?
Mr. President, under suspension of the rules, move to receive item 8N and refer to the planning board.
Heard the motion. All in favor, any opposed, to vote?
Under suspension of the rules, move to receive and approve item 9A, all papers being in order.
Heard the motion. All in favor, any opposed, to vote?
And I did want to let people know, some of my fellow councillors were there last night, but we did have a second meeting regarding the Zelski Field on Linfield Street, which, those of you that don't know, is community preservation-owned, city-owned land through community preservation funds. The neighbors are... The neighbors of our second straight meeting have expressed their desire to not have passive recreation on the property, and to leave it as open space. I did discuss that with the mayor, and gladly, he has agreed that we will do some flood mitigation on the property to make it usable as open space, but it will remain open space, and it makes me happy for the residents of, of Linfield Street and West Diane and Quail Road that attended last night. As far as the Quail Road residents, they did have some concerns about flooding in their area with the correction of the problems on the Zelski property, and we are addressing those concerns with the engineer, and we will make sure that, hopefully that does not Secondly, for informational purposes, the cell towers and self-PBD, the two proposed cell towers, through conversation with the mayor, as well as some PMLP employees, the DAS, DAS system, distributed antenna system, is moving along fine. The master license agreement with American Tower, who has accepted the bid from PMLP, has not been signed as of yet, but they don't see anything stalling that signature, the issue at hand is May 2nd, the city will go to court regarding the, the cell tower, so I'm, I'm hoping that the judge sees enough progress to allow a continuance. And lastly, the asphalt berms throughout the city, as most of you have probably seen, I'm, I'm going to file a motion for one in particular, but if we could just let DPS know that as they drive by these asphalt berms that are out in the middle of Linfield Street and Lynn Street and all over our neighborhoods, that they, they need to be picked up. I, I've called probably regarding three or four already, I'm going to file a motion for a fifth tonight, but these are on the, the front lawns and on Linfield Street, several other streets, so those asphalt berms need to be picked up. And so the motion would be to have Public Services pick up the asphalt berm, which is on the front lawn at 15 Will Sawyer Road, and help that resident out, and there's quite a bit of it.
Heard the motion. All in favor, any opposed, to vote?
That'll be all, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Gould.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a co-motion with Counsel Mutsulis, to have the front of 19 Buxton Lane, the, the front grass strip that was damaged over the winter repaired and reseeded. So moved, please.
Heard the motion. All in favor, any opposed, to vote?
I'd also like to commend Counsel Turco for his diligence with the Zelski property. You were able to balance some bunch of opinions last night, Counselor, and you did a very good job of it. And I'd also like to let my colleagues and anyone out there in TV land, that you have a day or two left to buy tickets for the ball at the mall, so, the last of our five centennial celebrations. So moved, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Gould. Counsel McGinn?
Thank you, Pres- Mr. President. Motion, move to amend section 19-81 of the ordinances of City PBD to add a handicap zone on Swampskid Ave in front of and along the property line of 16 Swampskid Ave. So moved.
Heard the motion. All in favor, any opposed? That needs to be published, correct, Counsel McGinn?
Advertize, yes.
Advertize, correct, thank you.
And under suspension of the rules, move to receive item 9B and set up a public hearing. So moved.
Heard the motion. All in favor, any opposed, to vote?
No further motions.
Counsel Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one motion, I would request the city clerk to send a letter to the Verizon representative and any other carriers of landline telephone wires, to remove or at the very least secure the hanging wires that we see across the city. And on that motion, Mr. President, there are several neighborhoods where there are wires that are hanging from telephone poles, and when you call the municipal light plant, they will come out, and once they identify that it is not their wire, they notify whoever the carrier is. And in many instances, because people are not using landlines anymore and have either, you know, bundled it with their cable or chosen not to have it at all, when these wires somehow come loose from a home and just kind of blowing around, they're not being addressed very quickly. And I would just like Verizon and any other carrier who is responsible for their wires to remove them. So moved.
Heard the motion. All in favor, any opposed, to vote?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Mutsulis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under suspension of the rules, I'd like to go to item 8J. I'd like to receive and set up a public hearing.
Heard the motion. All in favor, any opposed, to vote?
I have no further motions.
Thank you, Counsel Charis.
Heard the motion. Item 8O, all in favor, any opposed, to vote? Please put your mic on, Counsel Charis, thank you.
Also would like to make a motion to ask the municipal light to attach lights to the existing poles on Exit Center Drive from Leahy all through the streets, past the post office, behind Shaws, and to the end. There's poles there now, but no lights. So if we can ask, does that have to go through the DPS to the electric light? So if we can ask the DPS to refer to electric light to install lights on the existing poles.
Heard the motion. All in favor, any opposed, to vote?
South Street, yep. One more was to allow me to solicit private funds to bring back the gazebo or the sunhouse that was in Emerson Park for many, many years, that was burnt down, again, many years that it was existed. If you allow me to, on behalf of the city, to solicit private funds, not city funds, to build or erect or buy a gazebo, and to work with the Department of Rec and Parks of where location for this to go, and any other office of the city. So moved.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Counsel Walsh, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I love the intention, I'm just concerned, I, I don't know that we have the authority to allow him to solicit private funds, I don't know, I'm, I'm not quite sure that's the proper way to go about it, with all due respect. I, I think probably we should have a legal opinion. I'm not, I just don't think that's our, our authority, and I don't want to get him or anybody else in trouble, so.
Counsel McGinn?
Yeah, I, I think, I mean, we ran into this issue on a, on a obviously much larger scale with respect to the centennial, and there was a separate entity set up, a 501 3C, to solicit funds, because I think we found that it was going to be improper for the city to do it, so I, I, I would agree. I realize, I, I'm in, in agreement with the spirit of the motion, as is Counsel Walsh, I just want to make sure we're doing it properly so that we don't create a sticky situation. Thank you.
Counsel Sinewitz?
Would, I just remember when they built the playground at Siteanny Park, we had cooperation with the city, but it was all private funds. They sold bricks, and they put a light bulb at the hesitation as the money rose up. The city really, I don't think we're in a position as, as a city to be soliciting private funds.
Just a point of information, when they, when they built Siteanny, who headed that up, Counsel Sinewitz?
Even though Jerry Rizzo was heavily involved with that, it was, it was a group, it was an organization they created, it wasn't the city that, that did that, that was private.
Counsel Charis?
Yes, to be clear, that's the role I'm, I'm looking at, not to, I like the blessing of the city council of the, of the ways I can do this, but certainly establish a committee to have this done, and again, not asking the city to solicit the funds, I was just asking for the blessings of council and their support in a ways that I can do this. I, I think, like you all said, in the spirit, it's welcomed, I just want to make sure that I can get the blessing to do it on my own and then work with the Department of Rec of a location.
I think what I'm hearing, Counsel Charis, your, your fellow councils are concerned about, actually, they don't, not that they don't agree with the spirit, but I think possibly maybe you might want to make a motion in the form of the city solicitor for his opinion on how to get the BN standard Emerson Park, how to go about soliciting funds, does it need to, need a formation of a 501(c), or are there any other avenues that he would recommend to protect yourself and for any future endeavors?
So moved.
You've heard the motion? Counsel Gould?
On the motion, if I may, I, I am totally agreement that with you, Counsel Charis, that would be a wonderful thing to bring back to Emerson Park, but I think our fellow council is right, let's get Smizinski, Counsel Smizinski, involved in it. Thank you.
Counsel Mutsulis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ed, I think you just made a good move. Do you know how much you're looking for?
I'm sorry?
Do you know how much you're looking for?
I do know at this point. But, you want to write a check?
No, I, I was going to tell you a little story, you made the right move tonight by requesting it, and plus, I agree with you counsels about a legal opinion and everything. In 1987, I made the same motion Ed did, and I put a figure on it, and the very next day, I got a phone call, and I went to visit this company, and they gave me, I'll tell you what the request was for, it was to fix a park down on Larus Road, and I said we needed $15,000. The very next day, I got a call from one of the companies on 114, I can't say the name because it's anonymous, I brought it in, gave it to me at the region, and we fixed that park up, so you should have set a figure, there might be someone out there who wants to give it to you.
Counsel Charis?
Thank you, Counselor. I have not enough, but many people who would like to donate already, thank you.
Any further motions, Counsel Charis?
That's all, thank you.
Counsel Sinewitz?
Thank you, Mr. President. The first motion is to have the DPS go out and repair the sidewalk at 2 Uppam Drive, it, the plows ripped up the grass curb sprinkler system, see if they can go out and do what they can do to repair that, so moved.
Heard the motion. All in favor, any opposed, to vote?
Thank you, Mr. President. Secondly, I'd like to add to the list, if we can pave the intersection of Intervale and Gates Road, I have a resident complaining about the condition of that, so moved, add it to the list, so moved.
Heard the motion. All in favor, any opposed, all in favor, any opposed, to vote?
Thank you, and also thank you to you, to Counsel Turco, thanks for the update on the cell towers, because I, I think everybody was receipt of that letter, that now they want to put, they have plans on the table for one or two cellphone towers in Ward 6. So I'm hoping that with the correct legal advice on May 2nd, that we can win one and get that DAS system in place, that'd be awesome, and we could save a lot of heartache all over the city. That's just a comment. And lastly, under suspension of the rules, move to receive item 8L, and I don't, I don't understand, Tim, this is asking for a transfer of a special permit that doesn't exist. These people had a dance studio in 2000, in the year 2000, the dance studio's been gone for years. So it's a BN zone, so it just seems like they should come back, just like the vapor store. The first time the vapor store came for a special permit, the second time, it was a transfer, but I had them come before us because of all the issues we were having, so I don't know if this should be, I don't know what they're transferring it from, there is no business there that has a dance studio or recreational, I don't know what's there. So I, I would think, do we, this is from the building inspector, so I would, well, I think it needs to go, make a motion back to the building inspector that this needs to be set up as a special permit hearing. So moved.
Heard the motion. All in favor, any opposed, to vote?
All right, thank you, that's it. You know, thank you for the kind words, Counsel Sasso, the aggregate is a very time-consuming project, and it's, we've had our ups and downs over the years, but we seem to be in a decent spot right now, and I appreciate that, and July 4th is the last hurdle, and that's it.
Thank you. Counsel Charis, just a quick question, 8K, did you make a motion on that? I believe that's your Ward 8K metro building?
So moved. No, metro building? That's yours.
484 Lowell, is me, okay.
Is it metro?
Uh, that is five, yeah, I apologize. Could you, actually, could you make a motion to receive item 8K and set up, here, receive, do we need a hearing on this one, Tim? Sorry. No hearing? Just to prove it, special permit, make a motion. Motion, all in favor? Any opposed, to vote? Thank you. A couple, just a couple of quick motions, like I make a motion, Department of Public Service to repair berm in the side, the, the grass in front of 12 Martin Circle, so moved. Also, motion to repair the excess, they plowed, and there's like parts of the sidewalk on the corner of Southwick and Crane, to remove that area, so moved. And just to follow up, Counsel Turco, the, I, I agree with you about the berms, but this is, this is the question, the, the definition of the city is doing the same thing over and over and expecting different results. My question, and, and as we get closer to the winter, I'll ask DPS to come down, but if we're repairing berms, we're just plowing them over again, I think we've, you know, what good does that do? You know, we're throwing, you know, good money after bad money. I don't know if they have any recommendations, whether the homeowners should put flags, or, you know, we talk a lot about plowing curb to curb, so, you know, I, I would just like to get some input from the professionals on what they might recommend, or how we can alleviate the situation, because we're going to go out, we're going to repair them, and I hate to see us back in the same spot, repairing people's lawns, and then spending more money on berms that are just going to get ruined again, just a, just a thought, because I, I, I hear your concern, and at some point I'd like to bring that up.
Thank you, actually, you're 100% correct, and, and as I drove through Winthrop the other day, and I noticed that almost all the curving is granite curving, I just would really like to investigate the cost, and I, and I know it would likely be expensive, but to your point, is it much more expensive to replace these each and every year, year after year, or do we just go with granite curbing in many of our main roads? And I know granite is extremely expensive, but I also know that they have reusable, excuse me, forgive me in the word, but they have previously used granite that we could install in some areas, but anyway, I'm sure we'll discuss that at a later date, thank you.
Maybe Counsel Sinewitz can cut a deal with aggregate before he leaves town, you never know. Counsel McGinn?
Just to, I, I agree that granite is a far superior alternative, and I, I'm, I'm told by DPS that there's a pretty significant stockpile of it in the city, so we, we have some that would be at no cost, but obviously, there's installation costs that are sizable, so I think that's, that's historically been the impediment, but...
Thank you, Counsel McGinn. Can I have a motion to receive item 8F in Senate of Legal Affairs?
So moved, Mr. President?
Heard the motion. All in favor, any opposed, to vote? Motion to receive item 8I?
Motion to receive.
Heard the motion. All in favor, any opposed, it's a vote, and... Motion to receive item 8D, please.
Motion to receive.
Heard the motion. All in favor, any opposed, to vote?
Item 8H, Mr. President?
8H, thank you, motion to receive.
And item 8M, motion to receive.
Lastly, item 8M, motion to rece- well, that we received that earlier, I believe.
We did, okay.
Next up, item 9C, please. Next up, item 9C, please.
Item 9C. Jean, 2017, 4K, 24, 210, Andy Street, all in order.
Heard the motion, Council Manning-Martin, thank you, and... Heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed, a vote? And someone on item 9D, Council Gervell?
Taxi and limousine driver license, Alan Marquesi, license number 73, Michelle Glenn, license number 74, move to approve, receive, approve, subjects of all papers being ordered, so moved.
Heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed, a vote? Item 10A, item 10A, Council Turco.
Mr. President, move to receive and approve as advertised, item 10A.
Adopt as advertised.
Adopt as advertised.
Heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote? Item 10B.
Mr. President.
Council McGinn.
Move to adopt an ordinance amending chapter 20, offenses of the Code of the City of PBD, public consumption of marijuana prohibited as introduced, advertised, and published, so moved.
Heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed, a vote? Item 10C, please.
Mr. President, motion to receive and adopt an ordinance amending the Classification and Compensation Plan of the City of PBD, minimum wage rates, so moved.
Thank you, Council Walsh, heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed, a vote? The motion adjourned. Adjourned, thank you.